And we are live on Facebook. That's all of our channels.
Yeah. Get on Facebook.
Can you identify where that sound might be coming from?
I think it's air noise in the council chambers. For instance, I'm gonna mute Steve Fan for just a second.
Might be you.
It could be. I'll mute myself here.
Okay, everyone. Well, it is, it's actually 6:01 PM and we'll call to order this June 16th, 2020 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation, and Councilman Alexander is going to offer our prayer this evening. You would bow, please?
In your heart pray. Tell them grace to God. Once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this city council and the city of Gallatin. We pray of God for all the safety of everyone all over this land and country. I pray of God that this epidemic will come to an end real soon and protect and watch over our male who she's in Florida, that you allow her to have safe passage back to our city of Gallatin. Be with us in this meeting is my prayer, in Jesus' name and in every heart's there.
Before we go any further this evening, I do have to read the electronic meeting notification of the council if they will vote on it. It reads pursuant to Governor Lee's executive order number 16 and number 34 and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the June 2nd, 2020 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. You can see there on the screen where you can join the Zoom meeting. You can also watch it on Comcast Cable Channel 19 in Gallatin, on our Facebook page via Facebook Live, and on the website which is gallatantn.gov. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Most approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilman Overton, approved by Councilman Alexander. Any questions? Okay, Ms. Hinchell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
To me to Craig.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, it's unanimous vote, seven to zero.
Thank you. With that, we will proceed and ask that you call the roll for us, Ms. Hinchell.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And before you now, you have the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 city council meeting.
Most approve.
Second.
The motion to approve by Councilman Overton, the second by Councilman V. Are there any corrections or additions? Ms. Love, I'm looking at you. You knew I was. All right. With that, Ms. Hinchell, if you would call the roll for a vote to approve the minutes, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Ah.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven i's, zero n's.
Thank you very, very much. The minutes are approved. Now is the time of the meeting for public recognition on agenda-related items. We ask that if you do make public comment this evening, that you introduce yourself and share your street address with us. This public recognition is for agenda-related items only. At the end of the meeting, we'll have a time to address items that are not on the agenda. Also want to tell those of you who may be interested in commenting, there are three public hearings this evening. One is a plan of service, one is an annexation, and one is a rezoning. And it's all roughly for the same parcel of property related to what you have likely come to know as Project Woolhawk. So those are the public hearings that will happen once we get into the agenda. So if you want to comment on that, that might be the appropriate time for you to do that. But right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is open, and I will ask Mr. Hinchell to go through the list of attendees and see if anyone would like to comment.
Very good. And for those who are on computer, if you would raise your hand and let me know if you'd like to speak. We'll start with the cell phone numbers, though. The cell phone number ending in 001, your mic is available. Do you have something you'd like to say?
Um, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Do you have something else you'd like to say?
No, no, I'm listening.
Okay, thank you. Phone number ending in 718, do you have something you'd like to say? Okay, phone number ending in 988, do you have something you'd like to say? Very good. I see Pascal and Michelle Gervance have raised their hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Just, we'll make comment on the free together when, when you start the public comments, just to let you know. Thank you.
Very good. And that appears to be everyone. Let me just make sure.
Yeah, let's give it another minute. If there's anyone that is online, because he's gone through all those who've called in, if there is anyone who is online as a part of the Zoom meeting, I would ask that you raise your hand right now so that we will be sure to identify you for public comment.
We do have an additional one. Renee Saunders, go ahead.
Yes, this is Renee Saunders. I think you asked for an address, 2092 Rodman Boulevard, Gallatin. Wanted to add, well, I guess I think this is a comment regarding the parcels that you talked about last week and that you're sure to address today. And my question was about the need for additional fire and police involvement in, when, once those parcels are developed. And I'm sure you'll address that when the time comes to, to discuss further on the matter.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Please raise your hand. We'll give you another couple of seconds here. Here we have one. Jing, it's J E N G O D W I N. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Glenda Godwin. I live at 1124 Roundtree Drive, and I'm just listening in because I wanted to hear all the details of the rezoning areas.
Very good. Thank you.
Public comment. Now would be your time before we move on to mayor's comments. Mr. Hinchell, I see no one else raising their hand. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
All right. Well, at this time, I'm gonna move on to mayor's comments. I do actually have two proclamations to present tonight. The first is a proclamation recognizing our national public safety telecommunications. This says, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Sumter County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters, monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Gallatin community have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job, I therefore, I Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim June 14th through June 20th, 2020, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. And I would add that I am most impressed with our telecommunications here in Sumter County, just like all other first responders in our county. COVID has made things even more difficult for them, and they work long shifts taking care of our citizens. So on behalf of the council in our city, we say thank you so much for all that you do. The second proclamation is a proclamation that was requested by Ms. Alana Hibbler. I actually saw her on the call this evening, and she worked with our office to get this done for this evening. So I'm appreciative of her efforts, and I'm glad to share this proclamation with you. And this is for Juneteenth. This says, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring slaves and Confederate territory free, paving the way for passing of the 13th, which formerly abolished slavery in the United States of America, and whereas word about signing the, the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed about two and a half years, June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African Americans in the South and southwestern states, and whereas on June 19th each year, we look back to this day in 1865, on which Union General Gordon Granger led troops to Galveston, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War and slavery. Thousands of enslaved people experienced freedom for the first time. This day has a special meaning to African Americans and is called Juneteenth, which combines the words June and 19th. Whereas, over the next several decades, African Americans began different celebrations to commemorate Juneteenth, a day to honor heritage, culture, and contributions of African Americans, and whereas on June 19th, 1865, General Granger's announcements called for absolute equality. Juneteenth is a day we can all take one step closer to achieving this vision. We can commit and come together, young and old, to listen, learn, and to refresh the drive for freedom and equality for all people. And whereas the city of Gallatin and the Gallatin area community recognize that the lives of Black people matter in the Gallatin community, and that Black and Brown people deserve respect, dignity, and access to opportunity, and whereas the city of Gallatin promotes Juneteenth and subsequent celebrations as an elective working holiday. Now therefore, I Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby recognize Friday, June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth in the city of Gallatin, and urge all citizens to join in celebrating this special day and to encourage the community, including agencies, businesses, and pools, to acknowledge Juneteenth by supporting an elective holiday and/or hosting assemblies or activities to celebrate. And I would offer, Ms. Hibbler, if you'd like to add any comment to that, Mr. Hinchell, can I mute you if you want? I don't want to put you on the spot. Oh, you raised your hand. Awesome.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Brown and the council for accepting this as a position from people in our community. And we just want to bring this important holiday to, in our history period, bring it to light and create awareness. As growing up in the military, I've traveled a lot around the world and throughout the country, and there's just some places, you know, history wasn't taught in certain places, and we just want to make sure that everyone's aware of all of our history as a whole community, a whole nation, a whole world. So this is celebrated in other parts of the country, and we just want to recognize and promote the awareness. You know, it might not be shared in different parts and schools and books and different things, but we want to bring it together as our community because we embrace the people in our community and those visiting our community. So this shows that and recognizes it. And so hopefully, we'll have a celebration soon.
Thank you, Ms. Hibbler, for all your efforts. I know you've worked really hard to turn this around fast, so we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Only other comments that I have this evening is I do plan to hopefully at next week's work session, to share some information with our community about our Gallatin Police Department. You know, we had the protest probably, I guess it's been two weeks ago now, and there were a lot of questions asked or a lot of requests made of our city and our police department, and it made both I and Chief Andy realize that there was, there were a lot of people in our community that really didn't know what our community, what our police department had been doing for many, many years, our policing philosophy, our efforts to hire diversity. And so we're going to be putting together some information to share, both with the council and with the community. So you can look forward to that. Also want to share, actually, it's kind of sad news, I think. Well, no, it is, but I spoke yesterday, met yesterday with David Brown, Director of Parks and Recreation, and we've collectively decided that the city pool is not going to be able to open this year with the limits on attendance and the late period that we're in in being able to hire lifeguards for that facility because they're not people that we keep on staff throughout the year. He just did not feel like we could responsibly open that pool this year, and I'm very sorry for that. But certainly, the health and safety of our community is of the utmost importance, and so we will not be doing that. I will update you too on the indoor pool, and, and I don't know if Mr. Brown might like to chime in on this, but the indoor pool during COVID, when we first had to shut down our facilities, Parks and Recreation decided they were going to take advantage of that downtime and drain the pool, do some repairs, and do some painting. Well, when they drained the pool, there were some issues. There was a lot of groundwater at that time, and they started having some potentially structural issues. And so they called in an engineer to evaluate. They are now awaiting the report from that engineer so that we can learn what we need to do to address any potential issues and get that pool back open. Right now, we don't have a date for reopening. I know that everyone is anxious to get it back open, and we will all be working to do that just as soon as we possibly can. So that concludes. Mr. Brown, did you want to chime in on that?
He's in the pool.
He's in the pool with no water.
I guess he didn't.
It's time, bro.
Yeah.
And he can certainly later in the meeting speak if he so desires. With that, I'll conclude mayor's comments and move now to the regular agenda. The regular agenda, first item is a public hearing on Resolution R 2006-30, and for that, I recognize Councilwoman Love.
Thank you. And thank you, Alana, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all of our great Gallatin first responders. Okay, first on the agenda is public hearing for a resolution of the City of Gallatin adopting a plan of services for the annexation of five parcels totaling 524.14 plus or minus acres located south of Roundtree Drive, west of Brights Lane, and north of Hartsfield Pike, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
All right. Like before, we'll go down the list of phone numbers first, the callers, and then we'll ask anyone else to raise their hand, and we'll give you appropriate time to do that. Let's start with the phone number 001.
Debbie Horton, I live on Roundtree Drive.
You have a comment you would like to make this evening, Ms. Horton?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
You have a comment that you would like to make in this public hearing, or are you just observing this evening?
No, I'm pretty much observing it to just try to understand how it's going to affect Roundtree Drive.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, phone number 718, you're unmuted. Do you have something I could say about this, this agenda item?
No comment.
All right, thank you. And phone number 988, your mic is open. Do you have something that you'd like to say? Okay, thank you. We do have Pascal and Michelle Gervance have raised their hand. Go ahead.
Hey, good evening, all. Pascal Gervance, 1335 Long Island Park. Just made comment on the free altogether annexation and the rest. It's very funny that I never made a Freedom of Information Act request before any time in my life because I always trusted my elected official, except for now. And I have to say, that's a powerful tool. So to understand what is going on behind the scene. One of the things I found is that you guys are reading my blogs. That makes me feel special. Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, you read the last one dedicated to how the project started by basically destroying a dead man's wheel. If you did not, please do so. I'm pretty sure you're gonna find it informative. Now back to some numbers. The plan of service for Woolhawk, or now it's out of the ad, Facebook Data Center, is full of interesting things. It starts by portable water, gas, and sewer. I'm gonna quote the plan, your piece of paper, "The developer will be responsible for all costs associated with infrastructure improvements necessary to support the annexation." Again, it says the developer will be responsible for the cost. It's black and white on the paper. So why is the city telling us they are investing millions of dollars in improvement for water and sewer? They don't help the city. They do as every other developers do. They pay for it. The only difference here is that they are so almighty that they won't deal with it. The city will do their work, find the contractors, make sure they own time, and much more. And I'm just wondering what the city will do next time contractor will arrive and say, hey, you did it for Facebook, do it for me. On top of that, on the water side, we're giving them free stuff, temporary pump station, no cost to them. I don't see that cost anywhere on the study and on the paper. Regarding the permits, they will pay $400,000 per year for six years. Great. For that amount, all fees will be waived, impact fees, review fees, inspection fees, permit fees, and every other thing fees you can think about. On top of that, they will get priority handling in front of everybody. Staff is already swamped. We would take care of it, this full-time job. But one of James emailed to the mayor, again, thanks to the FOIA, it says, using the method the building department used to determine permit fees, just a building permit would have been in excess of $1 million for each building. So basically, after the second building, everything is free. Yeah. Go to fire and police. Again, I take the paper. We need more police and an additional fire station. I forgot, we got told they never requested it because they have a state-of-the-art security and fire. So what it is, we need it or we don't. Noise testing at a project with any routine should not be subject to any noise limitation. I really would not like to be their neighbor. Now on the annexation report, it is funny that it is using the Plan Gallatin 2020 as a reference. I think it's a really good document, but unfortunately, used only when convenient by this council. Again, plenty of upcoming expenses for the taxpayer, vehicles, maintenance, staff, 200 K for police, I like more police, 120 K for the fire personnel, plus the cost of the station, probably around $1 million. Who's gonna pay for that? But the best part is the project revenues, cost, and feasibility. It says that Facebook will pay approximately $806,765 in tax. Seriously. If they don't do the pilot, if they do the pilot, they pay $1 million, more than the study. Nobody pays more tax than they should. Nobody. Not you, not me, not Facebook. Something is wrong here. The numbers don't make sense. Why? Because they use BEAT as a baseline for the calculation. We use $15 million for BEAT, again, a $750 million project, it's Facebook. It's like comparing a cat with a grizzly bear. Back to the FOIA. I requested a document that James talked a lot because it was nowhere to be seen, and that is a document that James sold the project on, the economic impact analysis. What I got is a string of a one-day exchange of email with 16 emails. That's it. One day. And I requested a communication between James and younger associate, the company who made the, the economic impact from January 2018 to June 2020, only 16 emails for a $750 million project. Does that sound right to you? Not to me. And the emails include sentences like, I quote, "We need to find a way to show this on paper that makes sense," or "I need some help," or "We went from four-plus ratio to one, ratio jumped to five-plus to one, and now we are three-plus to one." Always the same numbers. Sounds like trying to make the numbers look good. Plus, the tax rates used for calculation on the document never changed for 20 years. We just got a 35-person property tax increase in few years, so I suppose we won't get an increase for the next 20 years. And that would be great, but we're not Facebook. And I almost forgot the franchise fee the city would be paying to Castleton Spring Utility District, another $400,000, $400,000 break, nowhere on the report either. These are a lot of breaks, and Vice Mayor Camp said, I paraphrase, "We don't get the lot for what we are giving them." To finish, I found a few things interesting. First, almost no question we asked during all these meetings about this project by you guys, making me wonder if you really care. I hope you do. Or if things we don't know about happens outside of the council to decide the future of this project. And second, I'm wondering why this vote is washed in. You don't do a lot of hearing and vote on the same session. We're expecting to have two weeks later. And, you know, I made another FOIA request last week to get to the bottom of this. Of course, it would be voted yes before we see the documents requested, but make no mistake, I will make sure our citizens know a lot more than you all think they should. I wish you a good evening.
Okay, we've got, yeah, we've got a couple more phone numbers that popped up, phone number ending in 283. Do you have something you'd like to say on this agenda item?
No comment.
Okay. And then phone number ending in 395. Is something you'd like to say on this agenda item?
No comment. Thanks.
Very good. Okay, we have Jay Boone 000, raise their hand. Go ahead. Jay Boone, you'll still have to unmute your mic.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I was not present for the earlier meetings and discussion. I don't know if there was, you know, I guess we want to say full disclosure, during those meetings on exactly the benefits for Gallatin. Having Facebook come, come to the Gallatin area is wonderful. New business, lots of jobs, lots of construction. Beyond that, it seems like they also give a lot of breaks in order to get that. Does that mean that, that those jobs are going to be for Gallatin citizens? Does that mean that there is going to be tax revenue coming in for Gallatin? You know, what, what are the benefits? And I guess I, I'm asking, was this fully discussed, discussed in a public forum so that the public would be aware of, you know, the pros and cons of this plan? The other question was, in looking at the map, it seemed like the parcels were just kind of piecemealed together to be annexed. I was just wondering why it wasn't annexation from Roundtree to Bright to Hartsfield Pike, the whole thing, including the residential areas there so that they could receive services. If indeed, we're going to have to have new services for that area for the industrial part, what about the residents who are going to be, you know, doing the taxes on it? So, and then thirdly, with this annexation, who will be the representative for that area? Is it going to be a new council district opening up, or would it be assigned to someone that's already a part of the council?
Very good. Thank you very much. And Renee Saunders has raised her hand. Go ahead.
I wanted to, again, echo the question regarding additional police support and additional fire support, and just ask if Facebook as a business should be responsible for their own security. And if the answer is yes, then what is the reason for requiring more police support? And I'm imagining more fire support is because you have more square footage of business going in there. But for police report, I mean, for, for the police support, I would just question why that is needed and why we should, why we as the citizens of Gallatin should bear the brunt. why we should, why we as the citizens of Gallatin should bear the brunt of the cost of that.
Thank you for your public comment. And we have Zach Wright. Go ahead, Zach.
Hello. I'm a bit late to the game, but I just wonder what kind of cost of service study was done to make sure that there's no subsidization down into this new business?
Okay. Thank you for your comment. If anyone else has joined us late, if you would raise your hand virtually on Zoom and let us know you'd like to speak. Yep. Ms. Godwin, go ahead. She had her hand raised for just a brief second there.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, I just want to add to what someone else has already asked. It looks like the annexed areas are just kind of piecemealed. And I guess who made the decision or how did y'all come to the decision that you're leaving part of Roundtree as agricultural, but then as you move on to the residential area, that goes back to the industrial. I don't know why all that would not stay agriculture. I wish somebody would explain that to us. I mean, we want Facebook over there. We know that's great for the city of Gallatin, but why does it have to go all the way up to the residential area when that other part has been left agricultural? Can somebody explain that?
Okay. Thank you for your public comment. Kristin Majah. Sorry, I butchered your last name. I know. Go ahead.
It's okay. It's 34 years running. I think it's okay. It's Mahia, and I live 2092 Robin Boulevard. And my question as for the new parcel situation is I would just like to know about job priorities. So when it comes to construction and the different things that will be needed to obviously create this area, will these be city bids? So will local construction companies or local whoever be able to bid on this contract to be able to do the work with the city?
Thank you, Ms. Mahia. Is there anyone else who would like to raise their hand on Zoom and speak? Okay, Mayor, that appears to be everyone.
Right. Thank you very much. We will now declare public hearing on Resolution R2006-30 closed and move on to public hearing on Resolution R2006-31, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin annexing five parcels totaling 524.14 plus or minus acres located south of Roundtree Drive, west of Bright's Lane, and north of Hartsfield Pike into the City of Gallatin, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, assigning the annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing on Resolution R2006-31. And Mr. Henshaw will go through the cell phone calls to see if anyone would like to speak there. And then if you would like, if you are on the Zoom meeting and would like to comment, just raise your hand, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We will start with cell phone number 001. Do you have something you'd like to say on this? Thank you.
No comment at this time.
Thank you. Phone number ending in 283.
No comment.
Thank you. Phone number ending in 385.
395.
I'm sorry. Thank you. 395.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Very good. Let's see. 718.
No comment.
Very good. Thank you. Phone number ending in 988. Okay. And I think that's all the phone numbers. I'm looking for any raised hands.
You're on the Zoom meeting and you don't know how to raise your hand? If you will move your cursor down to the bottom of the page, I believe the option is for an attendee to raise your hand. I'm in as a panelist, so it doesn't show for me, but in my past experience, I think that's correct. Is that right?
I believe so. Lori could probably chime in on this.
Yes, I believe there's an option at the bottom of the screen, and maybe to the left, where it says raise the hand to speak.
Okay, I don't see anyone else.
All right. Well, with no one indicating that they wish to speak, we will declare a public hearing on Resolution R2006-31 closed and move on to public hearing on Ordinance O2006-25. And Councilwoman Love, you're recognized again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin to rezone 483.36 plus or minus acres from the residential 1A district to the industrial restrictive district to rezone 40.78 plus or minus acres from the medium-density residential planned unit development district to the industrial restrictive district to rezone 116.22 plus or minus acres from residential 15-plan residential development district to the industrial restrictive district and to rezone 6.25 plus or minus acres from the agricultural residential district to the industrial restrictive district totaling 646.61 plus or minus acres located south of Roundtree Drive, west of Bright's Lane, north of Hartsfield Pike, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open on Ordinance O2006-25, and we will do what we had done before. Go through the phone numbers first, if anyone would like to speak. And then attendees who are attending via Zoom, we ask that you raise your hands, know that you wish to speak, and we will allow you to do so shortly.
No. No comment.
All right, very good. That was 001. 283.
No comment.
Thank you.
No comment.
Very good. Thank you. 718. Hold on one second. Mark gets you unmuted. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No comment.
Thank you. And 988. Phone number ending in 988. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay. Let's see. I'm just checking. 988, 78 283, 395. I think that's all the phone numbers. We've got a couple people raised their hands. Jayboon, go ahead.
Okay, so my question. Am I muted still?
No, we can hear you.
Okay. My question was, the parcels that are being left behind, the ones, are they going to be just left as residential? For zoning purposes, or in the middle of the industrial? Or do you all, during the public hearings, not answer questions?
Public hearings are just for public comments, and then when we get to to vote on these things, I've made some notes based on the public hearing to make sure that we attempt to cover them all. So, but yeah, public comments of public hearings are just for public comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And Pascal Michelle Jevonce, go ahead.
Oh, hi. This is Michelle Jevonce, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I just had a couple comments about the rezoning of going from agricultural to industrial in regards to the neighbors who live right there and how it's going to affect them. As we've just recently learned that a big portion of the land there was in a trust that I think that probably a lot of the neighbors who lived next to that property were under, they had the knowledge that that was going to be agricultural land in a trust forever, and they probably, some of them bought property thinking that that was what was going to be there. And now that it's changed because of the trust being broken, this is going to affect them, and I don't think that they were considered in this, because especially when I read the development agreement, it said that if any of the property that would be adjacent to this data center was going to be developed in a residential manner, that the residential development would have to put in a 100-foot buffer, it would not be actually the data center's job to have the 100-foot buffer. It would be the residential that would be required to put in the 100-foot buffer. So it just seemed a little unfair and a little kind of skewed on towards giving, you know, this giant company the benefit. And I just feel really bad for the people who live there, who thought they were going to be living next to an agricultural land, and that was why they bought that property, and now things were changed. It's kind of like having the rug pulled out from under them, and I just wanted to make that comment and say that I, I don't like the way that that happened. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. Here we go. Ms. Godwin, go ahead.
Okay, again, I would just like to understand why on the, on the part of Roundtree that you left agricultural, why that it's not going on down and left agriculture down to the residences, the rest of the residences on that, on that round tree, because that's just going to put more traffic going through our residential area on both ends, which is not safe. And I know the industrial park probably needs another outlet, but I don't think our road is the place to do that, and I wish somebody would consider that. I wish you guys would address that. Like I said, we don't oppose Facebook moving in there. We just wish you would consider the residences that are still there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that appears to be everyone.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Henshaw. At this time, seeing no one further indicating that they wish to speak, we will declare a public hearing on Ordinance O2006-25 closed. We now move to item number four, which is second reading on Ordinance O2005-22, and for that, Councilman Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance, City of Galton, Sunday County, Tennessee, rezoning 0.67 acre lot from R40 Low Density Residential District, MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, with a preliminary master development plan for Montgomery Office located south of Nashville Pike and east of Lake Shore Drive, authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on Ordinance O2005-22. Ms. Kittle, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Kemp. Councilwoman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor 7IC Ronays.
Thank you very much. Item five is second reading on Ordinance O2005-23, Vice Mayor Kemp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ours appropriating $10,000 for the census rapid response grant. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Kemp, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? I would mention for those who may be new to watching a city council meeting, we are appropriating funds that the city has been awarded already to the proper usage, and so that's why we have to vote on those. It's not general fund dollars. It's money that we receive from a grant. Ms. Kittle, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Kemp. Councilwoman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor 7IC Ronays.
Thank you. Second reading on Ordinance O2005-23 does pass unanimously. Item number six, second reading on Ordinance O2006-24, Councilwoman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is second reading appropriating $15,510 for pooling city hall vehicle, and that's so moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on Ordinance O2006-24. Call the roll, please, Ms. Kittle.
Vice Mayor Kemp. Councilwoman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor 7IC Ronays.
Thank you. Second reading on Ordinance O2006-24 does pass unanimously. Item number seven is a resolution R2006-30, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin adopting a plan of services for the annexation of five parcels totaling 524.14 plus or minus acres located south of Roundtree Drive, west of Bright's Lane, north of Hartsfield Pike, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion. First, I would take any questions from this council?
Mayor, we're going to address some of these questions involved up right now, or we're going to wait until we read all of these?
Well, I mean, if you have specific questions you'd like to have addressed, that would be fine. You know, you might mention them. I have a few things. I'm going to ask Mr. Fenton and Mr. McCord to speak on a couple of things and see if we can clear up some things for folks. Any other council members have any questions?
I think what I would ask are probably the same things you're going to ask them to clear up.
Okay, well, we'll go through a list, and I would like you guys to chime in if we're missing anything. And for the public watching, you know, please realize that this has been discussed both at Planning Commission and at our council meetings. So there has been previous discussion, but we would like to bring you up to date and try to answer some of the questions that were asked. So, Mr. Fenton, do you want to potentially go first? Some of the things that I'm thinking that you might wish to address is the issue that, you know, the city has broken someone's trust, the benefits for Gallatin, the zoning and the jobs, or actually, maybe Mr. McCord should handle the zoning. One simple question that was asked was about the council district. Anytime land, and I'll address this one, anytime land is annexed into the city, they are assigned into a council district. And then when the next election, or actually not the next election, but the next redistricting happens, based on our census, which would happen, probably will happen about 2022, then those districts get redrawn. The City of Gallatin has seven council members, and until that is changed, those council members will continue to divide up the areas in our city based upon population. So that's the answer on the council district one.
Mayor, may I chime in right quick?
Absolutely.
I had a few phone calls about the Bright's Lane entry point and the gate of what's that one? Roundtree. I just want to make sure, Mr.
I just want to make sure Mr. Fenton or Mr. McCall will clear that up.
Mayor, should I go? Let's, let's go ahead and address Mr. Fennell's question right there about Roundtree and Brights Lane. The site plan that's been turned in has no connection to Roundtree. There will be no connection going out to Roundtree. There is one connection to Brights Lane, and that's only for emergency services. It was mentioned that a road needs to be put in there. And there are actually plans being drawn up right now to extend Gateway Drive down to Hartsville Pike with the inclusion of a stoplight on Hartsville Pike. So there should be no traffic back in on Roundtree or Brights Lane directly associated with this project. The other thing you mentioned, Mayor, the trust. And I guess the last living heir had to be a part of this conversation from the very beginning. And in fact, he had tried a couple of times previous to this to, to sell that apartment. It hadn't really worked. This, because of the, the benefit to the city, I think is the only reason. Understand that this wasn't a unilateral decision by this city to do this. There were over a hundred people that had to look at and vote on and be a part of the decision for that trust. So that is not something that, that we, we could have done by ourselves, including the entire Board of Directors, the University of Tennessee, President UT, very, you know, a, a big, big group of people were involved in deciding that this was going to be beneficial for Gallatin and for Sumner County. Actually, all of Middle Tennessee and the state of Tennessee. There were questions about some of the, I'm sorry?
I was going to say I want to interrupt you real quick because I want to be clear on one thing. City of Gallatin does not have a vote on breaking this trust. I mean, that was not anything that we were to be considering. And that all of the beneficiaries had, had to decide that their position was more advantageous if the land were sold for this purpose than it were as, as, as done in the will between all the beneficiaries and not the City of Gallatin. I want to be clear on that.
Thank you, thank you. There was a, a concern about the property up on Roundtree going into industrial that butts right up against the houses up there. This company, in which, by the way, we're all throwing around names. It's unconfirmed speculation at this point. The city is still under an NDA. We are working with Project Woahaw. Just want to make that clear. But the land is being taken down eight hundred acres. And a vast majority of that is going to be for buffer. All of that land that is being brought in, it's up on Roundtree, that is simply for a buffer. There was concern about noise. Where this facility is going is going to be at least three thousand feet from them and any other home. And that's again, what they've done is purchase a lot of extra land just to ensure that they aren't encroaching on, on the neighbors. They do want to be very, very careful about that. As far as job priority, there is a construction company that's probably in tow with this particular project. They will be hiring. Lots of folks here will have the opportunity. And also the facility itself, once it gets up and going, are those jobs will be posted. Anyone here that has the skill set will be able to apply for that. And Mayor, I want to just remind everyone that we've been working for three years with Ball State. They've put together a very robust program over there of IT skills that will be needed here. And we also facilitated a, a conversation and a partnership between Ball State and the Nashville Technology Council for their PRETETN program. They've already run one cohort through here, which will also give anyone that needs those skills that would like to garner those skills, a, a chance to get those right here in our own town. Realize it'll probably be two years, at least two years before that building is up and running. And that will allow our folks here to go ahead and garner those skills so that they can apply for those jobs. Also, question was, it looks kind of ragtag. There was a piece here and a piece there. It didn't look like it was all being taken in. What you're looking at is the annexation and rezoning map, not necessarily the entire site. A lot of this land is already in the City of Gallatin. And there's a hundred and seventy-some-odd acre chunk that is already in the city and is already zoned industrial. So nothing needed to be done with that. There's another hundred-plus acre piece of property that was already in the city, but it was zoned residential. So that's being, just the zoning is being changed on that. So that map is a little bit deceiving as far as what they're actually going to do. And, and that's why it looks ragtag like that.
But James, people need to understand that we can't just go out and, and, and request them and put them in the city ourselves. If they want to be inside the city limits, they have to request it. So we can't just go out and put anybody we want to in the city right now. They have to request to be put in the city.
Yes, good, good point.
And I think a lot of comments were, why don't we take all the residential houses out there and put them in the city? Well, they all have to be, they all have to request to be put in. We, we can't put them in by law now. We can't put them in the city unless they request it.
Exactly, exactly. And they-
I want to be sure everybody understands that. We just didn't go pick and choose. Anybody that's out there in residential area has to request being put in the city.
Good point, yes, sir. Let's see, what else, Mayor, that you need me to, to address?
Yeah, maybe that, okay, the cost for utilities, that was certainly something that was brought up.
Yes. That, and I apologize if, if, if there was some misinformation out there. The City of Gallatin actually will not be paying for any of that. Project Woahaw will be giving the city eight point four million dollars to pay for all that infrastructure that needs to be put in. And let me explain that that infrastructure isn't just for them. What that is going to do is make sure that the, the system remains robust and can continue to serve everyone that's out there. That's, it's not just for them. It's to make sure that once they are up and running, the rest of the city remains whole. The, the franchise fee that was mentioned for Castilian Springs Bethpage, the caller, I don't think understands the, the federal and state legislation and guidelines and rules that are, govern those. We don't have the ability to just change that. We had to go ahead and, and have a, a conversation with Castilian Springs Bethpage Water District. This project, at its maximum drawdown, will require more than a million gallons a day. CSB Water District only uses between eight and nine hundred thousand gallons a day, and they purchase their water from us. So we had to make sure that they were whole. And that's why we put together that, that agreement with them. Needs to be known that a state senator and a state commissioner were in the room when that development project and deal was put together and that agreement was, was created. So that, again, was not a unilateral decision on our part. There were a lot of people that were involved in that. Yes, ma'am?
I was going to say, I want to add there, too, that there is no impact to the Gallatin Public Utilities ratepayers. That also reminds me to mention, and no one really mentioned it tonight, but I think people will be interested to know because there's been talks about using our electricity capacity. This project actually would get a direct feed from TBA, does not impact our electric utility capacity. And while it does impact our water utility capacity, we are currently using only about fifty percent of our water utility. And our amazing superintendent over there, Ms. Gregory, says we have plenty of capacity. So I think that's a good time to announce that, uh, to-
At maximum drawdown, they'll only be using six point two five percent of our water. And that is a very rare occasion. So we are in very, very good stead with utilities. The question was raised about the impact, the, the kind of service and something to the effect that was going to be eight hundred thousand dollars, but these folks were paying a million dollars. What that study did was take, and again, we don't have, you know, it's an unconfirmed speculation. If that property were rezoned to industrial, that's what would be expected to come off of it, was the eight hundred-plus thousand dollars that the planning department put together on their financials. As it turns out, what we've created, hopefully, if we're able to put this project to bed, is a, a, a much larger cash flow than what was originally expected to come out of that much land. So that's why there was discrepancy there also. How's that? Anything else, Council?
I just, I just have one question, Mr. Fenton. You, you mentioned that the Roundtree would have no access to it from this development. And also on Bright Lane, there would be an access, but it would only be emergency. How would that be monitored? Would there be a gate? How would that be noted as just an access, uh, uh, emergency lane?
That's how it's put together on the, on the site plan. Is, do I have the ability to maybe share a site plan with this body and the public? Looks like I do. Let me go ahead and share my page. So if everybody can see this, this is where the facility is going to be. This is Roundtree up across the top, and this is Brights Lane. You'll see over here, the road comes in and the only access into this project, this company will be from Gateway Drive. You'll see there is no road that comes out the back anywhere there. And there's just a planned emergency exit, Mr. Alexander. So that's, that's how we can do that, all right?
Appreciate it, thanks so much.
Yes, Mayor.
The red light, is it? You said it's going to be located on Hartsville Pike.
You're muted, sir.
Mayor, I have a question.
Wait, wait, um, just one second, if you would. I believe Councilman Fan had a question. I could hear him, but I'm not sure that, um, Mr. Fenton could.
No, I couldn't.
My question was, where is the red light going to be? Did you say it was going to be on?
Hartsville Pike. It will be down here on Hartsville Pike, and the design's still being looked at at this point in time.
Will there really be? Do you think it's really going to be necessary? Because the traffic will be stopped there at the Airport Road anyway, and it's going to break the traffic.
Let's see, how far is that Airport Road? From that is, let's see, pulling this up on a, on my computer here real quick. That's all, it's forty-nine hundred feet, almost a mile. So that really wouldn't impact this area. The, and actually, uh, once the signs went up about this, we only had two calls here in the office. And one of them was a gentleman that lives in that area. And he was, he was excited about the light because it slowed traffic down and he could get in and out of his, his driveway a little bit easier. So again, we're almost five thousand feet from Airport Road. So it would probably be necessary.
Now, you had a question, I believe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you give the citizens what type of impact we ought to expect with potential increase in traffic with this development?
After construction is complete, we're probably looking at a hundred and fifty to two hundred people that would be coming in and out of the industrial park. That's it.
Time goes back to my question, do we think a red light would really be necessary for that many cars or vehicles?
Well, uh-
I just like to see the traffic stopped going, by the time they get up to speed limit, then they're going to be stopping again.
I think, again, there, there are several traffic studies going on right now, Councilman Fan, that will really make the final decision on that. Got, uh, an engineering firm and TDOT are both involved in that decision-making process.
Thank you.
One more thing.
Yes.
James, I know you answered this a couple of weeks ago, but there's still misinformation making the route about fire protection that's needed. So can you re-
Yes, thank you. It was asked earlier, and, and the woman was very, you know, was spot on. They will have their own security. It's going to be a highly secure facility. And they also have a standard-of-the-art fire suppression system because they've got an incredible amount of computer works inside. It can't just be water kind of thing. And they have ten of these facilities across the United States, and none of them have ever had a call for fire or, uh, police. There does exist the possibility for a medical emergency. And we are very fortunate that right around the corner on Airport Road, we have EMS, EMS facility. So I think we are well-covered in that area. There won't be a, a, a police or a fire station needed for this development. As it continues to develop out there, certainly it will. There's a hundred and eighty acres that's coming on. You know, there are going to be lots of residents out there. So those are the kind of things, we'll probably force that kind of decision quicker than this one industry.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fenton, I would like, if you would, to talk a little bit about the benefits for Gallatin, particularly the capital investment and what that translates to for the city. I certainly would mention that we feel like it's bringing very good jobs to our community. Realize that we are projected to have a shortage in our workforce in the coming years. And so that's why we find large capital investment with small employee, small, a, small number of employees, but good employment opportunities very appealing. That's actually where we focused our efforts in recent years. If you've been following the city, you know that we've been trying to increase, will increase our prosperity. And that means increase our, our wage per hour. And the way that you do that is you attract either highly technical jobs, very skilled jobs, white-collar jobs, office jobs. And, and so we feel like this is certainly a step in that direction. We, as Mr. Fenton said, we have not been officially notified of what the brand is. But because of what we do know about the company, just looking at our community, we believe that whatever that brand is will be a very good brand association for our community. And it will invite, um, will help attract other good jobs to our area that could be similar or at the very least highly technical and well-paying. So, Mr. Fenton, you can add-
Three-plus years ago, uh, this august body sat down and put together a strategic plan for the city. And at the very top of that list decided upon by this group was jobs in technology to continue working with our manufacturing sector to expand that. But we also needed to pursue technology jobs again to diversify our employment opportunities here. As the mayor mentioned, these are going to be very good paying jobs. The, the, the forty, what they call badged employees, will make a minimum of eighty thousand dollars a year. Maybe the other hundred-plus that'll be there will be over fifty thousand dollars a year. And as she mentioned, we're trying to raise the, the, the standard of living here, the per capita income of the community, which benefits everyone. And so I think this company does indeed do that. Make no mistake, we are still talking to industrial prospects. We've got four announcements coming up in the next forty-five days that continue to have those kind of jobs also. But we're also, again, having been given marching orders by this body, that's what my office did, was go out and, and pursue. And this, again, will, if we can put this together, this will be the second, uh, technology-related company that we've been able to attract. Mayor mentioned, you know, employee shortage. Even right now, we aren't even post-COVID. We are still in the middle of COVID. We already have help-wanted signs out in our industrial sector. You can drive through there, and I can show you a half a dozen places that are looking to hire here. We are very, very fortunate here in Gallatin. We have an incredibly strong base, and we are going to continue to have that base. Again, we're here trying to diversify. Now, once you find, uh, once you get a Fortune one hundred firm, particularly a Fortune one hundred technology firm that puts down roots in your community, that puts you on a completely different set of radar for folks and companies that are looking. Once they land, they, you've proven as a community that you have the infrastructure, you have, um, the ecosystem and the culture that will support a company that big. And once this company, if we can get them to announce, does that, then we're going to have the opportunity to go out and pursue others of similar statute and, and again, continue to, to create incredibly large revenue streams for the city and also have really good paying jobs. And as Ms. Love mentioned a couple of weeks ago, you know, her kids, grandkids can stay here and get the kind of jobs they want. They don't have to go someplace else. So that's what our focus has been, and that's why I'm, I'm excited about this. I appreciate the leadership of this body that pointed our office in that direction and am proud of the results that we've obtained.
Ms. Fenton, let me say, please, I, I deeply appreciate your effort on behalf of you and your staff. I think you're doing an outstanding job for the city, and I just wanted to encourage you to continue to do what you do. And thank you for what you do, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll appreciate you, James, and your, and your entire staff.
I want to add one thing here, ladies and gentlemen. We've heard lots of mention about contract employees, and it's my understanding, and Mr. Fenton, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of that opportunity is going to be for electrical contractors, not just to offer that for awareness of our community. Because not only is it a good opportunity for existing electrical contractors, if you have children looking for a career to pursue, that might be a really good path for them to follow if they're interested in it. And Mr. Fenton, I was actually reading something. I don't know if you actually mentioned a capital number or if you have one that you might share.
Their investment?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes, there will be- Okay, uh, yes, there will be, um, right now, uh, seven hundred and fifteen million dollar cap, capital investment. And again, the revenue stream coming off that, I think right now, there's about twelve thousand dollars a year coming off all of that property. And that, uh, with the completion of the first building, there will be a million dollars a year coming off of that. With the second building, there will be another seven hundred and fifty million dollars. That one point seven five million dollars will make that the largest, uh, revenue stream for the county. And then there are plans for additional buildings out there with a potential of four and a half million dollars, four point two five million dollars a year coming into the county and the city.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for, uh, Mr. Fenton? Mr. McCord, um, might you have anything that you feel needs to be added to address any of the questions that were, um, brought up during the public hearing?
Uh, I took some notes and, uh, think some of the, their questions were pertaining to the amount of area that was zoned or will be zoned in IR, which is Industrial Restrictive, which is our light industrial zoning district. It does include properties that wrap around, uh, the site of Beretta and is adjacent to Roundtree Drive, including the property where the railroad went through years ago. Again, there's, um, property that they had purchased. So all the property that they, uh, had purchased, they wanted to have zoned appropriate for the uses that they would be providing. That doesn't necessarily there, mean they're going to develop all of those properties. And, um, quite likely, they will use, uh, a substantial portion of that property as buffer yards, if you will, with existing topography and landscaping that you see out there now. So, uh, you will have a large, continued pastoral-type setting even when these buildings are constructed. So, uh, we did do an annexation study and a plan of service as well, and there were a couple of questions about that. Uh, as we, uh, when we do those studies, we contact a number of other departments and ask for their feedback, and we do an analysis in a general sense, and this is kind of a unusual, specific type of project. So, uh, given it's a non-residential, we didn't use residential as the independent variable when we were analyzing the cost of services. What we did for comparative purposes was identify the amount of acreage as a percent of the, a, a total acreage in the city, and then, uh, created a, uh, match, if you will, uh, per acre as an independent variable versus population. So this annexation will result in a two-point-five percent increase in the, uh, square miles of the city or acres of the city, and, uh, that's the reason that we came up with the plan of services requiring or, uh, identifying the need for additional fire and police personnel. The city has, uh, property to accommodate those a, at a future date. It would be premature even at this state, or even at maybe the state of construction and completion of the data center to require a fire hall simply for that use, just as if you wouldn't build a school simply because you were at capacity at one school. You're not gonna build another school necessarily if, if you don't have enough students to, to fill it up. So, uh, that wouldn't be a prudent use of services. But, uh, the city is well aware of its need and desire to, uh, have an additional fire and/or police precinct on the east side of town and has, uh, already started work on progressing towards that way. So it may be some time before it's urgently needed. So that's pretty far off, in my opinion. Uh, let's see, I think you mentioned about who will represent the area, and, um, I think we've also answered the question about why we didn't annex other properties in the area. We, we're not allowed to and, uh, without a petition or a referendum, and, um, I, I think that's pretty much it. I think those questions were answered.
One other thing that was mentioned that, um, I can probably just speak broadly to is maybe some idea of local preference for jobs. Certainly, um, the utility construction that the city of Gallatin bids out, we have to follow the law for doing that. Um, I imagine everything will be publicly bid, Mr. Fenton, that they're doing. And, um, while certainly we want, um, as many local people to work on it as possible, that won't be entirely possible. And the jobs that actually will be there, um, they are well aware of our, um, desire to improve the opportunities for people in our community, and they have also expressed that they would prefer to, um, hire people from our local community. But those job skills certainly have to align with the needs of the company, and that's why I mentioned that about electrical contractors. Any other questions, anyone, before we move on to a vote? Okay, seeing no one indicating they wish to speak, I'm going to, um, move forward with, um, resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty and ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll, please. Wait, no, I'm sorry, I'm off one. Yeah, no, that's the right one. Two zero zero.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs and zero nays.
Resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty does pass unanimously. Item number eight is resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty-one, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the city of Gallatin annexing five parcels totaling five hundred twenty-four point one four plus or minus acres south of Roundtree Drive, west of Bright's Lane, north of Hartsville Pike into the city of Gallatin, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, assigning the annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
You have a motion by Councilwoman Love. I believe the second was Councilman Overton. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So a motion, a second, opening the floor for discussion. If there's anyone that wishes to further discuss this, please indicate. I see no one, so I will ask Ms. Kitchell to call for a vote on resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty-one.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs, zero nays.
Resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty-one does pass unanimously. Item number nine is second reading on ordinance O two zero zero six dash twenty-five. Councilwoman Love, you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I was following along, but I had computer problems that kept me from being seen or heard, and you're seeing and hearing a lot from me tonight. This is second reading on an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, to rezone four hundred eighty-three point three-six plus or minus acres from the R one A district to the industrial restrictive district to rezone forty point seven eight plus or minus acres from the medium-density residential plan, the unit development district to the industrial restrictive district to rezone one hundred sixteen point two-two plus or minus acres from residential fifteen planned residential uh, development district to the industrial restrictive district and to rezone six point two-five plus or minus acres from the agricultural residential district to the industrial restrictive district totaling six hundred forty-six point six-one plus or minus acres located south of Roundtree Drive, west of Bright's Lane, and north of Hartsville Pike, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
You have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? You seeing none? This second reading on ordinance O two zero zero six twenty-five, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, we have seven ahs and zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. Second reading on ordinance O two zero zero six dash twenty-five unanimously. Item number ten is resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty-two, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, and, uh, I think we need to defer this because we're, I think we need to obtain some additional information. So I'd like to make a motion. We defer it to our next city council meeting.
I'll second that.
Ms. Hamakali, is it okay to go ahead with that before we consider that?
Yes, the motion to defer takes precedence.
Thank you. Have a motion, a second, to defer resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty-two. Um, any discussion on the deferral? All right, we will vote. Ms. Kitchell?
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs, zero nays.
Okay, so resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty-two is deferred, and we move to item number eleven, which is resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty-three, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute Big Station Camp Boulevard corridor transportation improvements pro-rata share agreement with TN homesites dot com and ten properties Newman's Crossing GP. Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? I think I'll ask Ms. Kitchell to do a roll call vote for resolution.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs, zero nays.
Thank you. Resolution R two zero zero six dash thirty. That concludes the agenda and moves us now to other business. I do have two items under other business. One is an application for a road closure, and this is by, um, this is from Unlimited Potential Community Development Corporation, and it's for the closure of Winchester Street between Voyeurs and South Cardo. And the date is going to be, I know it's on here somewhere, um, from seven AM until twelve PM on Friday, June nineteenth. So that's the requested hours. All the signatures are here, lots of signatures from, I guess, residents of the area, and, um, all of the department heads necessary have signed off. Their only request for support is ten cones from, what? Ten cones from Public Works and two off-duty officers, which I assume, um, they are hiring, so.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs, zero nays.
You have it unanimously. And the final thing that I would have is I wanted to let you all know that our community enhancement grant committee did meet yesterday. We had several city employees, Councilman Overton, our citizen person unfortunately did not get to attend because she was, um, diagnosed with strep, but we met all day yesterday with all of the, um, nonprofits who'd applied for funding from the city. I emailed you today the list of recommendations. The budget actually does have to be amended with those specific recommendations, um, and so I will put that on the work session for next week. Anyone has any questions, you're welcome to call me about it.
Mayor, I just wanna say it was a great day, and thanks for all the department heads for allowing your employees to serve on that. Uh, it was a great day and a lot of input, so thanks.
They were all very, very engaged, and it's one of those days that you feel just really good about your community because we got to hear from so many nonprofits doing so many different things in our community and doing them very, very well and, and benefiting um, people of all ages, our animals, and, um, education. It was just, it was a really gratifying day to get to spend the day there with those folks and, and learn more about what they're doing in our city. And I echo, um, Councilman Overton's thanks to our department heads who allowed the employees to participate. I think it benefits of us all. So that concludes, um, my other business. Does anyone on this council have any other, other business?
I've got one thing, Mayor. Uh, I would just like to thank, uh, Ms. Hibler for bringing that Juneteenth to our attention. I appreciate her very much and the effort and the work and the concern that she have for our city as a whole, as well as hers. So thank you, Ms. Hibler, and I appreciate you, and keep up the good works.
Mayor, I just got one thing.
Okay.
I've received lots and lots of calls off of Belvedere Peninsula with our roundabouts, and I just wanna share everybody, like I've told everybody, just give it time. Let the engineering department see if it's gonna work or not. If it doesn't work, we'll do something else, but please just give it time. We understand the frustrations, but we also understand that folks over there have been wanting, and we've been addressing this for ten years now. So just give it time. If, if we need to do something different, the engineering department will make those recommendations. I appreciate everyone's patience.
I appreciate that mention, Councilman Overton, because I do, um, I think folks do need to be reassured that if it's not gonna work, they're stuck with it. But we do need time for people to, um, understand, um, how everything works, our police to be able to evaluate, our police to be able to do the traffic studies and engineering to actually interpret what might need to be done better or differently. Um, and remember that a large part of that installation was to stop some of the cut-through traffic.
That's right.
So it takes some time to actually understand if it can help in that way. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, anyone else from the council with other business? Hang on, we will move on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that people can address any items that were not on this evening's agenda. Again, we ask that you, um, give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes to speak. And Mr. Hinchell will again go through the phone numbers, and then if you're interested in speaking, use the raise your hand feature, and you will be called upon.
Okay, starting with the phone number ending in two eight three, you are unmuted.
No comment.
Thank you. Phone number ending in three nine five. Sorry, hold on one second. Okay, go ahead, three nine five, if you have something to say. Okay, phone number ending in seven one eight. Your line is open. Do you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, I just wanna say again, like, uh, Council Alexander made mention to Alana. I appreciate her effort on, and the mayor on the proclamation on the Juneteenth, uh, date. I appreciate all the effort and what was done for that.
Thank you. What's your name?
Kelvin Thomas.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. We just keep a record of public comments, that's why I ask.
Excellent. Oops, I'm sorry. I clipped you off there. I'm gonna unmute you again.
Mr. Thomas, did you have more you'd like to say?
I missed that.
I said, was there more that you wanted to say, Mr. Thomas?
Uh, no, ma'am, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Good, very good. The phone number ending in nine eight eight. You have something you'd like to say? Okay, and we have a couple of hands raised. Ms. Saunders?
Yes, this is Dr. Saunders in, uh, twenty ninety-two Rodman Boulevard. I wanted to, uh, echo the thank you to Ms. Hibler for bringing forth the request for the proclamation, and I also like to thank, um, the mayor for agreeing to make that proclamation and then now making it public. Uh, with respect to the comment that, uh, I wanted to make this evening, I want to implore the city council members as well as the mayor and ultimately the police chief to take into consideration President Obama's suggestions regarding police reform, not defund, but police reform, and I wanna know if you all will go to President Obama's website and take the pledge to reform our police department and take the to reform our police department and take the steps that are necessary to do that, that President Obama has suggested. I realize that President Trump made a executive order effective today regarding some issues on policing. All citizens of Gallatin need the police reform that we're, that the black citizens are asking for. This is not just a black or a white issue. This is an all issue. And I would just sincerely ask that you all seriously consider going onto the website, taking the pledge, and then doing the work that's going to be necessary to be sure that all the citizens in Gallatin are policed safely and treated fairly.
Thank you, Dr. Saunders. Ms. Mahia? Go ahead.
Oh, there, am I there?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yes, it's Mahia. And I have a couple of things that I wanted to mention. The first thing is, I believe that I live in District Four. My address is two zero nine two Rodman Boulevard. And I have called in several noise complaints to the police department, to which I don't feel like anything has been done, so I'm raising it to the city council. It seems like about between eight thirty PM and ten PM every single day, Sunday through Saturday, there is some group of racers, race cars, motorcycles, trucks. I don't know, I don't investigate because I'm not the police. But I have called in a noise complaint. I can hear these things in my window in the Woodhaven neighborhood from what seems to be like Gallatin Road or Greenlee or three eighty-six. I have asked at least three times that the police department look into it, not just have somebody come patrol the area. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I would like to formally announce that there will be a Clearview Park, or I'm sorry, a community come together day at Clearview Park. And I believe this is District Five. Please forgive me, I'm very new at these things and just trying to figure everything out. So I believe it's District Five, that that is. Thank you, Mayor. And that, that's going to be on June twenty eighth at five PM. This is an opportunity that the, the, what we'll say, the North Side community is taking to try to come together and work on some type of community needs assessment so that we can try to follow through with whatever work may need to be done in the clear, at Clearview Park or regarding a future Clearview Community Center, as we have had the opportunity to speak with Councilman John D. Alexander about. I was wondering, I'm so sorry about the crying baby. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to get COVID testing out there. I don't know who would, who I would need to speak with. I noticed there's not any health department representative on these calls. But if that's a possibility, that would be great. The last thing is, I am the founder. I'm the founder of a nonprofit that works specifically with black moms and black babies to reduce the maternal mortality rate and infant mortality rate here in Middle Tennessee. And so I would like a little bit more information on the ability to bid for these grant opportunities with the city in the future. If it's not too late to get on the current grant, that would be great. I would like to be able to possibly provide free diapers and wipes and different things like that. So I don't know who I'd need to direct that information to or whatever, but that's all I have. Thank you very much.
I'll answer a couple of your questions really quickly. February, last day of February, I believe, is the deadline for the grant application each year. Typically, we've done them a lot earlier, but COVID did delay us. And then the second that I can answer for you specifically, and we would love to have you apply, we've, or I think this council is all very proud being able to do more for more nonprofits in our community in recent years. We figured about that and would love to have you apply as well. And then the other thing was about the health department potentially doing COVID testing. Hal Hendricks is the director at the Sumter County Health Department. It's not city, so he wouldn't be on these calls, but he's a great man to work with. And if you want to follow up with the mayor's office, we can reach out to him and see, you know, once you have more details as far as people or what you might, we can certainly ask if they might be able to accommodate that.
Mayor, you might want to explain that there are some guidelines for nonprofits applying for our grants. So she might want to call the finance office and get those guidelines before next year. Because I wouldn't want her to come up in February and not have the guidelines met. So I just want to be sure that she's got time to meet those guidelines.
And that is all actually spelled out too on the application on our website. But actually, as I'm sitting here talking about COVID testing for the event on the twenty eighth, it occurred to me that there may be some private sector businesses that might be interested in doing that because all of that is covered by, so nobody's out and someone might consider a good marketing opportunity for themselves, so.
Great.
Anything else, Ms. Mahia?
Oh, the noise, the racing noise, is that something that I need to call? I think Councilman Hayes is my person, or do I just keep calling to file noise complaints with the police department? It seems like a waste of police resources, but I will if that's what I need to do.
Yeah, you probably need to, probably need to call the police department. Let them know about it.
For, for a fourth time, like I'm saying, like I've already called three times. So I'm just, if I have to keep doing it, I will.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know what I would do about it. I mean, I don't, I don't have any authority or anything like that to do anything about it. They do.
Okay. I'll just talk to the chief.
Yeah, I don't know if our police chief is where he can chime in. I know he was dealing with some business earlier this evening. But I, and I'm just thinking out there, but I can imagine that if it's noise that you're hearing in, in I think it's coming from Gallatin Road or somewhere else, it probably is really hard to try and find that noise. You know, once it, once it is called in.
Well, I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it literally goes on for a continuous three hours. So it should not be that hard for a police department, like whoever's needed, to find the noise.
Well, what have they said when they've been out there?
No one has said anything. Every time I call, I'm told that someone will go patrol the area. I am very specific about the time. And it is every time at the same night. So I don't think a quick patrol of the area is going to do it because if I am a race car driver who is breaking the law, I'm going to stop doing it while I see the raid, the patrol car. And once I no longer see a patrol car, I'm going to carry on with breaking the law and waking babies in the middle of the night and keeping people from sleeping. So again, if I, I mean, I can, I'll just give Police Chief Bandi a call tomorrow and try to set up an appointment to speak with him more because I do personally believe that continuously calling the line is a waste of police resources.
What's, what time does it usually happen?
Eight PM, between eight PM and ten PM.
Okay, because I, I don't know, I just wondered, okay.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and give him a call. Thank you all very much, and I appreciate your patience with my newness.
You're fine. Thank you for your input.
Oh, hi, Chief Bandi.
I will let me. Yes, ma'am. If you would please call me first thing in the morning. Do you, do you know what, what number did you call from? I'd like to research that and see the call log to see maybe we can.
Well, let's not have to give it during this meeting. Let's have to give it to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a call in the morning.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more person with their hand raised. This is Jay Boone. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say that these last couple of sessions that I've been able to listen in and be part of the council meetings have been bearing a lightning. I appreciate all of you, each of you doing the diligence work that you do on behalf of the citizens in Gallatin. And I look forward to, I got some more information. I look forward to getting more information on being a part of the process. I think that's one of the things that citizens need to do is to learn the process of governing, to learn the process of accountability. We can talk about and scream about, you know, this or that, the other, but until we actually learn processes and become part of it, then it's all for naught. But I appreciate all of you. And I encourage you to continue to disseminate information to the community that will help them, like what I found out today, the, I believe, Mr. Fenton's Economic Development Association there that has an initiative for Gallatin government to teach people about government. And I think it was, it was put tabled this summer because of COVID, but should be coming back in the fall. And I think more people becoming aware of it can become more involved in, in our community and making it a greater place than it actually is now.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Bandi, we appreciate your engagement. And we really do want people to get involved and learn more about our city because I think the more people that understand our process, the more that they can meaningfully participate. And I know it is so very strange if it's something you're new to, but stick with us, it will get less strange and you'll feel much more comfortable. So thank you for that. Mr. Hinchell, anyone else here?
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. We've covered all the phone numbers. I believe that's it.
Last chance. We're going to declare the meeting of June sixteen, twenty adjourned. I wish you all a good evening. Stay well, stay, say, everyone take care. Good night.